Good evening, this is City of Pleasantville, City Council Working Meeting. Today's date is March 6, 2023, at 6:30 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper, according to open book meeting act, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Roll call.
Dad and Porch, Pamela, Thomas.
Present.
Simona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Just from.
Present.
Six and Lieutenant.
Uh, I didn't take a motion for approval of the previous minutes.
Motion.
Second. For favor? All right, that's happened. Okay, Mary, you don't have any accommodations tonight, do you?
(laughing) Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Excuse me, Captain Hartman retired, and we have a certificate, uh, certificate to give to him from the mayor's office. We're jealous, very jealous, but we wish you a happy retirement.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
(applause)
Um, I just want to say thank you to our honor. Well, you want to read it?
I'd like to read it first.
Good.
Okay, City of Pleasantville Office of the Mayor Certificate of Commendation. Whereas Captain Matthew Hartman has been a member of the Pleasantville Police Department since August 2000, and whereas Captain Hartman served in the Air National Guard at the 177 Flight Away Security Forces Squadron and was activated by the United States Air Force following the attacks on September 11, 2001. Captain Hartman served on active duty, including a combat tour to...
Uzbekistan.
And Afghanistan. From December 2002 until May 2003. And whereas Captain Hartman has held the ranks of Sergeant, Lieutenant, and Captain, retiring as Operations Commander, and whereas Captain Hartman has been a member of the Pleasantville Police Traffic Unit, the Atlanta County Regional SWAT, which is Special Weapons and Tactics Team, and a Resilience Officer, and whereas Captain Hartman is recognized as one of the most dedicated members of this police, this police department, and we wish to wish him what, and we wish him well in his retirement. And now therefore I, William Ward, Mayor in City of Pleasantville, New Jersey, on behalf of the city, City Council, this administration, and the citizens of Pleasantville, do commend Captain Matthew Hartman for 25 years of law enforcement services and pray for a healthy and rewarding retirement. The witness will be the old City of Pleasantville to be affixed this sixth day of March in the year of our board 2003. Signed, Julian Ward. And I just wanted to say to Captain Hartman before he says his whatever or his speech that, um, working with them was great. It was just really good working with them, no matter what we were doing, whether it was in the streets, at the schools, or wherever, a real team player. I remember when we were at Washington Avenue, when everybody was doing the, what dance? What are we doing? We were doing it better than everybody. So he has rhythm too. I do, I wish you luck. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, like I said, as I started to say before, um, to our honor, to council, to everybody that I've worked with, some of you I do not know directly, um, come on since I left, um, Chief Williams, Linda Barry, everybody that I've worked with over the years, um, I'll keep it short, the way I see it, my father was raised here, um, I came to work here, I grew up in Hepsi-Kin, um, I say that I wasn't raised in the City of Pleasantville, but I grew up here, uh, that's, uh, that's how I see it. So the last 23 years have been, they gave me the opportunity, um, we don't speak enough about our boss, Chief Gray, who gave me the opportunity to come and work here, um, he was the chief, um, who has since moved on, and the chiefs that have come after that, everyone's, um, looked out for me, and while I could pass on to the guys, and I spoke about this the day that I retired, is just look out for one another, look out for the city. I will always, always, always be close to my heart, um, it is where my opportunities were given, and that's why I stayed here. There were opportunities to leave when I first came on, but I chose to stay here because I love the city, and I will never ever change. Thank you, everybody, and good luck to the guys, girls that have been promoted. (applause)
Mr. Hartman, I want to wish you well and a happy retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you've done for the City of Pleasantville. Have fun in your retirement.
Mr. Hartman, uh, appreciate your services, uh, and when you was out there, I was ready to you, and you was a, was a very polite officer, and I appreciate that. God bless you, and stay safe.
Thank you.
I want to thank you very much, uh, we might have not known each other personally, but I hope, I recognize you for the police in this town, I brag about it, I boast about Pleasantville Police, thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Hartman. Go out there and have fun now, enjoy retirement. Thank you.
Matt, we can't say enough good words about you. I've been around just as long as you have, seen you come up through the ranks, um, you've been an excellent teacher, leader, and when you talk about teamwork, you exemplify that, um, so thank you, you've been a great support with active shooting, uh, getting us prepared for all types of situations within our community, we appreciate your work, and it's great to see that when you retire, that you're retiring in good health, so God bless you and your family when you're, you're living your life.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
That's a moment. Congratulations on your retirement, uh, got a chance to work with you, working with you, get a chance to know you directly, and, uh, it's been a pleasure, um, uh, you have, as a retiree, you probably had one of those dynamic speeches getting out of here, and I thought you was ready to leave before you, uh, before you walked in the door, but, um, but, um, I appreciate, appreciate you coming on to, um, for the city and, and doing the great work and the great job that you do and, um, set forth for others that in that path of marriage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Thomas Zakowski. Officer Office, State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic, I...
I, Thomas Zakowski.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the same...
To the same.
And the governments...
And the governments...
Established in the United States...
Established in the United States...
And in this state...
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And partially...
Partially.
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of...
Of the Office of Police Captain.
For the City of Pleasantville.
For the City of Pleasantville.
According to my ability...
According to the, uh, my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I would just like to thank my family, uh, who's always supported me, my girlfriend Trish, um, all of my coworkers, the chief, the, uh, council, the mayor, of course, the city administration, guys, everybody's been wonderful at work for us, I'm so proud to work here, it's, um, it really is a blessing, and, um, I look forward to, uh, serving the city in this new capacity, and I would also like to congratulate Lieutenant Stocks, Sergeant Craig Dennis, Sergeant Antoine, and, uh, Colton Reed, who's getting sworn in tonight, who, uh, the best police in the state, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Brandon Stocks. (applause) Okay, Officer Office, State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic, I...
I, Brandon Stocks.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey...
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same.
And the governments established...
And the governments established.
In the United States...
In the United States.
And in this state...
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And partially...
And partially.
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of...
Of the Office of Lieutenant...
Police Lieutenant of the City of Pleasantville.
Police Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. (applause)
First, I wanted to thank God, uh, for giving me this opportunity, and then, of course, my family, uh, all the time that I've sacrificed, uh, to be here for this wonderful city, uh, I want to thank mayors, council, uh, for giving me this opportunity to continue to serve in this wonderful town, and, uh, I would do my best. Thank you.
Okay. Jean Antoine. Okay. Officer Office, State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic, I... Oh, oh! (laughing) You good? Everybody have a hand on it? Okay. I...
I, Jean Antoine.
Okay, do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
Thou'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey...
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith...
Thou'll bear true faith.
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To the same...
To the same.
And the governments established...
And the governments established.
In the United States...
In the United States.
And in this state...
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully...
I will faithfully.
And partially...
Partially.
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of...
Of the Office of Police Sergeant for the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. (applause)
Thank you, thank you. Um, I would like just to say something real quick, um, first of all, thank to, uh, for the Savior, um, my very first boss, my old sheriff captain, for giving me my first opportunity to be a part of law enforcement, uh, City of Pleasantville, the council, uh, mayor, my chief, uh, also my peers, uh, coworkers, they, they do know what I'm all about, I'm a worker, hard worker, always have been, and, uh, I'll keep striving, keep pushing, make the city proud.
Thank you. (applause) Thank you, precious.
Right. She's ready.
Officer Office, State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic, I...
I, Craig Dennis.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey...
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear...
That I will bear...
True faith and allegiance...
True faith and allegiance.
To the same...
To the same.
And the governments established...
And the governments established.
In the United States...
And the United States.
And in this state...
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
And partially...
And partially.
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of...
Of the Office of Police Sergeant for the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. (applause)
Yes, I got a safe speech as everyone else. First and foremost, I just want to thank my family, everybody that's supported me through this, um, long road, uh, the City of Pleasantville, uh, for giving me an opportunity, um, my chief, my peers, my wonderful girlfriend, my dad, and everybody else, um, thank you for attending this road to help benefit and help the City of Pleasantville, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Colton Reed. Officer Office, State of New Jersey, County of Atlantic, I...
I, Colton Reed.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey...
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To the same...
To the same.
And the governments...
And the governments.
Established in the United States...
Established in the United States.
And in this state...
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And partially...
And partially.
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of...
Of the Office of Police Officer for the City of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. (applause)
I would just like to say thank you to my friends and family to come support me through all this, thank you to mayor and council, and the chief and all the administration to give me this opportunity, um, I look forward to serving and making y'all proud.
Thank you.
I just want to say congratulations to everyone, and I look forward, you know, to working with you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for everything you can do for the City of Pleasantville, and believe me, we're very proud of our police department in Pleasantville.
Congratulations, sorry about your promotions, and congratulations to you for coming aboard, uh, God bless y'all guys, thank you for doing a good job, I know mostly all of y'all, so do a good, you know, keep doing a good job, God bless you. Thank you.
I wanted to thank you to everyone, but I want to address my comment to Chief Williams, before the virus broke out, we reached an agreement, it was an international agreement between Pleasantville and a country in Africa where police training will be exchanged, so I hope that spirit stays alive, that we can revisit it one day, but I want to use this time to congratulate everyone, maybe you could be one of those that will be traveling if the agreement is resurfaced, that we can analyze it well, you could be on your way traveling one day. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, everybody, keep up the good work. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations to all of you on your promotions, well deserved, and congratulations to our new hire, welcome aboard, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Again, I want to say congratulations to everyone, and hope you're just really strong, and all we ask is that you be safe and treat our residents the way you want to be treated.
That's right.
God bless you all.
Thank you. Congratulations to those that have been promoted, I know you deserved it, I see the work that you've attempted to try to do out here and in this community, and, uh, thank you for it, and to Officer Reed, uh, congratulations on working aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Chief Williams, I just want to say a couple words, and I'll start with the people that came in to support, all the people that got promoted in the new hired Officer Reed tonight. Captain Hartman, 23 years you and I, I want to miss you for a number of reasons, yeah, this guy right here is a great guy, he really is, and I tell you who's going to miss you most, it's those that are standing amongst you right there, because those police officers, they know that you had their back, and I appreciate that. For our promoters, TJ, Captain Zakowski, Captain Zakowski, Lieutenant Stocks, Sergeant Anton, Sergeant Dennis right here, those guys have been doing a great job for a while now, they've been in acting positions, and that's kind of hard to do, because when you're in an acting position, anything can happen, you can go back to the, to the rank that you were, but these guys did a great job, I'm glad tonight they came, they're all promoted, it's a really good thing, so congratulations to all you guys.
Thank you.
Officer Reed, welcome aboard, I think you're going to do well here, and, um, and I'm looking forward to it. All right? Counsel, thank you for allowing this to happen right here, these are some happy, you know, guys right here, and so am I. So thank everyone. Uh, what we want to do real quick is, we want to get a quick group picture if we can, and then, uh, Chaplain Younger is going to come up and say a prayer for our new hire and our promoters, if there are officers that have just got promoted, and Officer Reed can come up. Chaplain Younger. This is our lead chaplain right here, Chaplain Richard Younger, he's going to say a prayer for all the guys.
Bow with me, please, as we pray. Gracious Father, we come tonight in the words of the psalmist, "The Lord is the strength of my life, the Lord is my strength and salvation, of whom shall I fear?" Lord, we have no fear, because we have you, and Lord God, we ask tonight that by your grace, for your glory, for the sake of your name, that you would guide and guard the steps of Captain Matthew Hartman, who has served our city so faithfully for so very long. Thank you for the example he was to us of courage and leadership, thank you, Lord, for the friend that he's been to everyone in blue here tonight. Lord God, as the best of us step into positions of leadership tonight, we thank you for Captain Zakowski, we thank you for Lieutenant Stocks, for our sergeants, Lord God, for Sergeant Antoine and Dennis, Lord, and for our new officer, Officer Reed. Again, by your grace, Lord God, grant them wisdom, for the sake of your name, keep them safe. Lord, build into their families as you build into their professional lives. Lord God, let this be a city through their service where all are blessed to be here, bless them to be a blessing, we pray, for we ask it in Jesus' name, and everybody said together?
Amen.
And amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Capital improvement, next one agenda is a capital improvement, uh, for new...
I think it's on. All right, I'm mic'd up, I'm ready to go. Um, so just, um, I'm here to present the capital report following, um, the end of the quarter, this is the first for the quarter for 2023, um, just by way of project status, which changed since I last reported, um, Ansley Boulevard, as I noted at the end of the year, is substantially complete, the contractor will be remobilizing, uh, we expect this month to do the installation of the light poles, landscaping, and addressed, and punch list items. Uh, we also had the transit village grant on Main Street, again, that project is completing, will remain on maintenance bond, Decatur Avenue, I'm sure as you see, that work is ongoing, will remain ongoing, will be substantially complete this spring, um, also, we had a municipal aid grant for improvements along Tunis, Harrison, and Prospect, that work is substantially complete, the contractor has been wrapping up punch list items, so we expect to coordinate closeout of that project in the near future with the DOT. Dowdy Road, we have two, two grants, I, I know it as Dowdy and then Park Place, it's two phases of a project, those are both in design, phase one of the project, so specifically along the Dowdy Road quarter, has to be, um, awarded, um, this month, March 2023, so we are into the DOT to get their concurrence to bid, and we'll have that project on the timeframe as that went by the DOT. Um, we have one other project that is pending authorization, and that is a streetscape project along the Black Horse Pike, that proposal has been submitted, it's pending authorization, and that project for the DOT guideline should be awarded by July of 2023, um, as I indicated, if you're following along with the report, phase two, the Park Avenue improvements, again, project design is underway, um, for that project. improvements, again, project design is underway, um, for that project. That deadline to award is October of 2023, so that will be done in those timeframe parameters. Uh, we have streetscape project along old Turnpike, specifically from Main Street to kind of Boulevard, that contract has been awarded, and we expect mobilization this spring. Um, I've added to here, the city was awarded a Safe Routes to School grant, uh, for improvements along Leeds Avenue, North Main Street and Washington Avenue, that project is pending authorization, and I will work with administration. Because it's a Safe Routes School, it's federal dollars, so they do have some design, uh, alternatives improvements that can be pursued. Um, dredging permit, uh, that has been secured through the DEP, we are waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers permit, we followed up with them last week, they did, did indicate to us that we expect to have that permit this week. Um, the stormwater permit update, so this is a preparation of what's called a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, commonly known as an SP plan, that is complete and is posted on the website, we're coordinating those efforts with the DEP. Um, Joker's Field, again, part of the Green Acres approval, the plan specification and estimate for that had to be submitted by February 28th, we met that deadline, we anticipate that that contract will go out to bid to be awarded in April. So that is the status of projects, um, since I last reported, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Laura, you mentioned Leeds Avenue, North Main Street, Washington Avenue, anything in the plans for South Main Street, you do have four grounds.
Uh, so this was specifically Safe Route, so that's the only areas that were included, that obviously can be pursued, um, we did receive just under 1.3 million dollars in this area, but it, it was limited to those three spots.
Okay. And the, um, the landscaping on, um, Ansley?
Yes.
Are they, I, I know they're putting into hardscaping and, and the lights and everything, do you know what they're going with as far as greenery or whatever in the medians, are they going with trees or bushes or?
I can report specifically back in the median, I don't think we're doing any landscape improvements, because it was maintenance problems, we don't have the ability to water it, mow it, maintain it, so when I'm saying landscaping, it's more along the street between the curve and the sidewalk area, but it was my understanding that median was not going to be formally landscaped.
Is it going to have anything in it? Is it just going to?
Lights inside.
Lights inside in the median, yes, because we didn't do so well with the first round of trees.
Yeah, it, it's a hard area to actually irrigate and maintain.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you have a problem? So the Joker's Field improvement, so specifically the city had Green Acres funding, this, um, essentially is the park portion of that project, as well as incorporate some of the improvements at the marina, um, we just wrapped up the design and got it into, uh, Green Acres, I mean, there's a splash pad component there, um, the walkways, it's a substantial landscape package down there as well.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Knight, thank you.
Next, agenda review.
Versus ordinance number two, first reading amended chapter 116 and chapter 300 of the City Code regulating the operations of cannabis businesses within the city.
Chair, we can call, uh, our project manager up, recommend to explain ordinance two and ordinance three, please.
Good evening, thanks for having me tonight.
Good evening.
Ordinance two is really a clarification of our, um, ordinance with respect to the ability to have greenhouses and other non-permanent structures, enclosed growing facilities, um, are allowed in our redevelopment areas that are in the zone, there's three redevelopment areas, the California Avenue track, the Cambria Avenue track, and the Devon's Lane, so that, that, that there was clarity within our resolution that those were enclosed facilities, all the other conditions, odor control, security, remain the same.
ordinance number three, amended chapter 300 of the City Code regulating the operations of cannabis businesses within the city.
Yes, the, um, in, in this code, um, what we've learned through our first application that, that went through, that we wanted to be able to streamline, in, in particular, like the micro businesses, so this, this sets up an administrative committee, that if you have a site that already had at one time a site plan approval, um, that is in the zone, that doesn't change the intensity of the use, doesn't do any changes to the site itself, that instead of having to make an application to the planning board to obtain a waiver that you don't need a site plan approval, that the city will establish an administrative committee for review, um, so that they can make the recommendations. All the conditions remain the same, that, that, because it's a conditional approval, but it'll be done administratively, help these businesses move, move their process along quicker and easier.
Captain Missis Trump, Corvino speaking, Mr. Genadez, for Calis, who's out?
Hi, yeah, Rick Nettie, I, I work with Brooke Group, I am the city's consultant for redevelopment. Thank you.
Resolution fifty-three, approving the city to participate in the LEED implementation grant.
Any questions?
Resolution fifty-four, approving the law offices of Thomas G. Smith as special counsel for Pacific 2022 outstanding tax appeal matters.
Any questions?
Question. Um, do we know how many, um, matters are still outstanding? We do. Um, how many?
Well, not in numbers, only about the cases we do, um, and this attorney is working on the cases in 2022, will close off the case, the same case, which hopefully will definitely close out in 2023. And if you want the list of, uh, of cases, I can back up to you.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait there.
Is this amount for all the pending cases that is going to be handled, I know it's just one specific?
This is not to exceed that amount for whatever cases it's working on through this, uh, for this resolution, which is specific to, um, the Apple Farms, uh, case versus the city of Pleasantville, which is the Pleasantville shopping center that's under litigation for tax appeal.
The reason why we hiring, um, rehiring Mr. Smith, is, is there a conflict of interest with our?
No, there was a conflict of interest with the previous attorney, so we started working on the case, and we decided to continue to let him finish up.
To finish up. Thank you.
Next is resolution fifty-five, authorizing the Treasury to cancel 2022 appropriations retroactive to December 31st, 2022. Resolution fifty-six, granting the approval of a corn drop to the Pleasantville Junior Jokers Football Association for April the 8th and May the 27th. Next is review of the bill list.
First we can deal with the bill that were paid between the last council meeting, which was about ten days ago, and, and tonight, um, there is, you'll see on the right top, where it says Fire and Safety Services, ninety-three hundred hours of the check that was written last March, never cleared, they never, obviously never received it, we went to reissue it, it was for part of a warranty for a fire drop. Um, and you'll go down under works of wire transfers, uh, the seventy-seven hundred and nineteen thousand were payment based for, uh, Green Acres funding from years past, and the one in the middle, four ninety-seven, that is our current, uh, medical bill for actively retirees. Uh, we've got a bill looking to be approved for this time, on page one, you'll see Whitmer Public Safety Group, uh, that is for new weapons for the police department, um, upgrading the ones that they have, that have been trades in, trade in, once the new equipment is received, they'll be traded in for, for new. If you go to page two, uh, fourth one down is our first quarter sewer bill payable to the Lake County Utility Authority, it'll be three hundred and eight thousand, uh, because we can receive the credit from prior year, uh, the next, uh, few bills will be around to four fifty more. If you go to?
It's a hundred forty-two in credit, how much was the credit, a hundred forty-two?
Uh, the way they, the way they base the cost for sewers during percentage of flows, so they, they said for 2022, we would provide eight percent of the flows, which we'd provide eight percent of our budget, we didn't use that much, we, we provided seven point three percent of the flow, so they reduce our actual cost from last year, and give us a credit for this year. It helps in when there's not a lot of rain. Uh, page three, F8, you'll see Geneserv, the repair to the generator between the police department and fire department, they were having, uh, some issues, we, we brought Geneserv out to take, to correct. If you go to page five, the second, second one down, Midlandic Fire, uh, the pre-ocean annual testing for air packs, and also we're, we're in the process of purchasing some affordable lights for fire trucks, you know, we have a, a real old fire truck over here, so rather than have new lights placed on there, which are significantly more than this, we decided to get some, uh, temporary lights, and we can value them elsewhere also, if needed. The cost, I don't know if you saw it, the cost was far exceeding the, um, the money we're looking for in temporary lights. Just like a light bar. We go to?
Chief Tygo, please, you can. Who said, yeah, Chief Tygo?
Ignore him. Pat, you want to talk about the bars, bar lights?
No, so, I want to explain about the, uh, the portable lights.
Right. Tell me about it.
So, um, what happened is, is our onboard generator broke, and mine electric, it was about fifteen thousand dollars to replace on a twenty-two-year-old truck, so I sought permission to buy two thousand dollar lights, that we can move from truck to truck to truck, it's not stationary on one older piece of fire truck, so I thought it was better to just spend two thousand instead of fifteen thousand for repair, that we can use elsewhere and, you know, on other trucks, instead of just, you know, one.
Other than that, all the other bills, or normal operating bills, that we, we plan on a monthly basis, and we'll keep the city running, that's what we think.
Yes, I have a question. On page two, Mr. Louie, the CASA payroll service, can you explain this bill, please?
Which one?
CASA.
CASA payroll, they're the ones who do the processing of our payroll system, uh, we usually pay them on a quarterly basis, uh, they're the ones who write the checks, do all the quarterly reports for us, for both Fed and State, um, there's a charge, approximately five hundred dollars per pay, uh, and then year end.
Not what they do, but can you explain this bill?
Oh, sure.
Because it says, um, March 1st, 2023, December 27th, December 31st, January 13th.
They are the billing dates, except we pay like on quarterly basis, these are the invoices for their date, the biggest one is, is going to be your 1231, when you do W2s everybody, that's like fourteen hundred hours, the balance over between five and five fifty, each of those payers. So it's, it covers not just one pay period, it covers one, two, three, four, five, seven payers.
From December to March.
Except for December 31st, that's the biggest one, which is when they do, do the W2s for all the employees, and the Fed processing, send out.
Uh, the public safety, you said, they, they turn the guns in, get new ones? So when they, they give you a discount from the old guns, on new ones?
They get, they get traded in before, before the guy. Thank you. Next is the public portion, anyone from the public, I want you to speak on agenda item, agenda item, either one. Next is the public portion, anyone from the public, I want you to speak on agenda item, agenda item, either one, I'd say motion to close the public portion?
Motion.
All in favor? Second. Give me a second. All in favor? I'd have it done. Okay. Next is open discussion with council, all right, council?
Nothing at this time.
Council on the panel?
Nothing at this time.
Council. And nothing at this time myself, I'm just saying, motion to close the work session.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Okay. And now we will move into? Good evening again, this is City of Pleasantville, City Council, City, uh, regular meeting, uh, the day date is, uh, March 6th, 2023, the time is 7:25 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper and conforms with the Meeting Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law, which please stand for avocation and reflection. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, and thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us day, our daily bread, and give us a trespass, as we can give those trespass against us. Neither is the hour, nor is the time, nor is the kingdom, nor is the kingdom, nor is the power, nor is the glory, nor is the glory. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
That report, Fama Laram, here, Thomas, present. Kamona, present. Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Siskin.
Can I say a motion, space for every minute?
Necessary motion, second.
Okay. Any more accommodations or appropriations, Mayor?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
Versus ordinance number two, first reading, amended chapter 116 and chapter 300 of the City Code regulating the operations of cannabis businesses within the city.
Motion.
Wait, who made the motion? Okay, okay. Second by Kamona. Roll call, Fama Laram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Siskin?
Yes.
Ordinance moved to second reading, scheduled for May the 20th. Ordinance number three, amended chapter 300 of the City Code regulating the operations of cannabis businesses within the city.
March 20th.
I'm March 20th. Thank you for the correction. Motion needed?
Motion.
That's Korea, Barclay?
Yes.
Okay, so noted. Roll call, Fama Laram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Siskin?
Yes.
Ordinance moved to March the 20th. Resolution fifty-three, approving the city to participate in the LEED implementation grant?
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Fama Laram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Siskin?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution fifty-four, approving the law offices of Thomas G. Smith as special counsel for Pacific 2022 outstanding tax appeal matters?
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Fama Laram?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kamona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Barclay?
Yes.
Siskin?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution fifty-five, authorizing the Treasury to cancel 2022 appropriations retroactive to December 31st, 2022? retroactive to December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion, second.
Roll call, Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution fifty-six, granting approval of a coin drop to the Pleasantville June Jokers Football Organization for April the eighth and May the twenty-seventh.
Motion, second.
Roll call, Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the bill list.
Motion, second.
Roll call, Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Motion approved. I need a motion to approve the bingo license.
Motion.
Second. Roll call, Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sistrum.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is public portion. Uh, anyone from the public, want you to speak on?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sam Jones, municipal resident. I'm here to speak on two issues. Um, I'll take one at a time. I recently had a chance to look at documents that are going to be submitted to the planning board at the air meeting on March fourteenth. I know this is not a planning board meeting. However, there's a problem in that the planning board meetings are scheduled to be a Zoom meeting, which will not allow a lot of the public access to them just because of the technology, technology issues that occur. And, but I would also encourage and ask that that meeting be held publicly as opposed to a Zoom meeting, given some of the issues that I think are going to come up that are very important. And just because in, in, in interest of time, I'm going to cite exactly one problem I see. And this is regarding the proposed trans, um, the transfer station that Mr. David Tally is establishing, um, or trying to establish on Washington Avenue. Um, in that documentation, I found the document that I found pretty distressing. It's the land use approval form. In that form, it specifies the, uh, proposed use for the property to be a transfer station, material recycling facility, and a resource recovery facility. We all knew about the transfer station. That's taking the construction debris and putting it on rail. That's one issue. But the, the other two, I've never heard of being part of this equation before. Material recycling is, uh, my opinion and my understanding is collecting recycled materials. Please correct me if I'm wrong if you have a chance. And then carting them out to, um, facilities elsewhere that are prepared to actually receive that recycling materials because it's no longer being processed locally. But that needs to be made aware that that's part of the proposed plan. The other is, this is more distressing, resource recovery facility. I asked, what is a resource recovery facility? And when it comes down to it, I did research and it's an incinerator. And there's a, this is an example of a resource recovery facility in Union County. And it accepts animal waste, construction debris, dry industrial materials, food waste, municipal solid waste, recyclables, yard waste, and bulk waste. And they put it in this facility, they burn it, and they generate electricity in that plant. This is something I don't think the citizens of Pleasantville are aware, that if the, um, planning boards, my understanding, gives approval to this, it would open the door for this facility to be built with these operations incorporated. And then, but we stopped it, just like we stopped with John Brooks because of the medical use was approved for that building prior to John Brooks coming in. And I think that needs to be, uh, suppressed. And actually, this particular element removed from the site subdivision, which is the bold intent of that submission at the planning board on the fourteenth. The second, and I'll get to this real quick, is with regards to the ideal facility. Um, as many of you know, there's a lot of, of problems from my perspective of the history of the gentleman, Mr. Parik, who's just sitting here, with regards to his history, with regards to training facilities and insulin, um, eight years or so ago. You know, I'm not going to get into the particulars of his case, especially since he's not here. But to say the least, it's very problematic. And the problem that I have with it is I looked into the agreement that was entered into by resolution, uh, a month ago at City Council there, and there's some statements in there that I just can't believe. And I'll just say, say it real quick, the redeveloper, which will be this gentleman that was here, the redeveloper shall have the right without the consent of the city to sell any such action in terms of recycling, redevelopment things appropriate, provided the redevelopment team, the full. The redeveloper reserves the right to select at its sole discretion counsel for any claim or dedication as to which the city requires indemnification. The indemnification is curing, um, um, lawsuit type disputes. It should not be in the hands of the developer to pick the attorney and decide what settlements would be appropriate for the city. We're giving up our power to not agree the agreements that we're entering into. It needs to stop. Thank you.
David Chet.
Good evening. David Carrington, um, City of Pleasantville resident. This proposed incinerator, um, I don't know if we thought about this, realize and, and, and realize what the effects are going to be, especially to the children in the Pleasantville School District. We have many children who suffer day in and day out with asthmatic and bronchial conditions. We have community taxpayers who will be tremendously affected by this transfer station. Whether it be through the, an incinerator, uh, trucks, uh, contamination, noise contamination, whatever the case may be. And I don't think there's a, 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 a dollar price that you can put on the lives and the safety of our children and our taxpayers. Okay? Not only will we be, uh, affected, but there's neighborhoods on that side of Ed Harbor Township who will also be affected by this proposed incinerator and transfer station. We really need to give this more thought. Okay? Um, bus tra- bus traffic, um, transportation for, uh, our, our schools Monday through Friday. That will definitely interfere with that process. We have to give this more consideration, a better thought process, because this isn't going to work for the City of Pleasantville. If Galloway turned it down, Galloway is three to four times larger than Pleasantville. Why is Pleasantville going to accept, in a tight area, this proposed, uh, incinerator and transfer station? It just doesn't make any sense. It really doesn't. You're sacrificing the lives of our children, our school district, and our citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Carrington. No, I'm sorry. Oh.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
With respect to the City of Pleasantville, resolution number four eight dash two thousand twenty-three regarding, uh, Juan D. Parique. Um, I've read all of the information, um, that the United States had against the gentleman, and I have a question, uh, with regard to this. Um, where has Mr. Par- Parique worked between the time of his release and currently? Where has he worked? Has he worked in any other city to promote his idea or to do his bridging? Was, was it any, where has he worked since his release up until now? Does anybody know?
Do you have the council president? Yeah, there's, that's not something that we would know. I did, just for transparency purposes, receive documents. Um, I did speak with the council president about it. Those documents, um, are essentially ten years old.
Okay.
Um, the terms, um, have been fulfilled, um, more than seven years ago. Um, so there's no oversight, and I'm speaking to some extent code, um, because I just want to, there, there's no oversight, and so everyone is entitled to work, and it is the purview of this body to decide whether or not they want to accept a business proposal. Um, I am under the understanding that there, there was a vetting process prior to my appointment. Um, and so, you know, I'm not sure how far in the weeds they're going to go to look at where someone has worked prior to putting together this, but they own that property. Um, so there's no requirement of, as far as supervision at this particular juncture.
Okay, I understand. So with, with the fact that we're entering into business with Mr. D. Parique, um, there were, there were then recommendations for him to set up his, um, his, his, um, bridge program?
I'm sorry, are you speaking to me?
Oh, no. Oh, I don't know. No, I'm speaking to, I'm speaking to the people that were that did.
What do you mean? Say it again.
This business deal that you entered into, you're familiar with it, right?
Yes.
Okay, so what is it about? Tell me what, what this deal that you entered into him, what is it about?
It's about a school.
It's about a school. Okay, so he has recommendations. So we're entering into an agreement with a man who was prosecuted for the same exact kind of actions?
Yeah, you're not going to answer that question because it is truly public record, right? But it was not for the same conduct. He's opening up a school in a property that he purchased, um, that he's gone through the appropriate governmental approvals, and the only thing that they did was enter into a redevelopment agreement with him. Um, what the prosecution was, based on my reading and my conversation, was based on things that happened as it related to visas and not necessarily what would transpire in the future, or hence based on the most recent agreement. So we can't speculate that this will recur. And that's, that's essentially what you would be asking them to do.
Okay. So then, he has a five-year payment, which is pretty good considering the thirty years for everybody else. But with, with regard to this school, is there a tuition? Is there going to be a tuition attached to this school? Or how will this school be funded? Since he's getting a tax abatement for five years, how will his school be funded? Through tuition? And will that tuition come from the Pleasantville Board of Education? How will, how will the tuitions be paid?
Mr. R- Mr. R- Ren, um, you want to answer a question?
Yeah. So, good evening. Uh, I didn't know that this is a, a matter of subject, but I came to invite everybody because we're doing a groundbreaking for the Pleasantville Atlantic City building. But the school is not-for-profit, private vocational school. We just received a national accreditation, regional accreditation. We will be getting the financial aid. There is no burden on a Pleasantville School District, Pleasantville residents. Just because we're welcoming a Pleasantville, we just launched, uh, twenty residents, uh, from Pleasantville, uh, to get a free training for a healthcare career, leading to, uh, Atlantic City, uh, Atlantic City Hospital System. So I've been in an area and working for the school for last eight years. This is our eighth year. We're the biggest at-risk youth program. Our school is funded through Department of Corrections, uh, for second time to provide veterinary services. So, uh, we've been serving one hundred and forty at-risk youth, uh, last year and this year as well. That's Atlantic County residents. No cost to them. We provide bus passes, train for free, and, uh, with the job placement as well. So the use of the building, the school is a tenant in the building, uh, and a redevelopment agreement. When we did it, we didn't buy the building under the nonprofit, so we don't ask for the tax. We wanted to partner with the Pleasantville City, Pleasantville residents, and pay our fair share. Even when we applied for the planning board, we didn't ask for any cost waiver. We paid full amount for the planning board site plan approval, and we paid all the cost, uh, that, uh, city attorney, uh, city engineers occurred to approve the plan. So we're paying, uh, and bringing value to the Pleasantville.
Okay, so you're not getting a tax abatement?
Tax abatement is a.
For live use?
Five years tax abatement on an improvement that we're doing for the city that's going to bring around one hundred and fifty to two hundred jobs. And that's in accordance, we were told, that its minimum is allowed by the payment. So we're going to get a tax abatement on an improvement, uh, that we're going to bring because we're building and investing four million dollars in the property.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make this Rodriguez.
Urban Moreno Rodriguez, Pleasantville resident. Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Tonight, I want to directly express my comments to City Council President Ricky Sistrum and Mayor Judy Ward. I want to express my utter disgust to you two about the lack of education in this city in general. But now we're talking about a trash transfer facility six times larger than originally proposed. We're talking in square feet, a facility ten thousand square feet less than the ACUA facility in Ed Harbor Township. Not one thing has gone out to the city. You may have done what was legally right and announced this planning board meeting to people within a two-hundred-feet radius. Look at all the homes right here within the proposed trash transfer site. Look at them, homes filled with people, with children. And you're going to do what's legally correct? You have to do what's morally correct, what's ethically correct. You have children with asthma, as Mr. Carrington pointed out. The elderly with upper respiratory infections, where an incinerator, a trash transfer site, will impact them. I don't know how much money this city is getting for this site, and I really don't care. Because no amount of money is worth the, the impact, the detrimental effect that this site, this trash transfer facility is going to have on our city. No money. For two years, this developer, this, this contractor, this person has been playing games with the city, with his plans. Two years, and we've had one public meeting. That's it. Now we have a meeting in front of the planning board next week, and what have you done to educate the residents? What have you said? Do you know what a resource recovery facility is? Have you talked to people in Chester, Pennsylvania? Have you talked to people in Camden about the absolute utter detrimental impact this has had on those communities? There's a reason this developer is coming to Pleasantville and not Galloway, New Jersey. Look at her makeup. He thinks he can come in here, tell you what he wants to do, and get it done. Let's think about this. There's a planning board meeting next week via Zoom. You want to have a public hearing via Zoom? What kind of transparency is that? And again, we may not touching on, but we may not be touching on legal matters, but this is about ethics. This is about doing the right thing. This is about standing up for the community. This is about standing up for the community and having these public meetings in public with the people present, not online. I hope you have had the time to synthesize this information that we received Friday evening, by the way, Mayor. And you were included in those emails. Had not someone from this area emailed you and the city about the lack of links available to those documents, we would not have those today. Hadn't somebody not gone on the website and looked up what those documents were? This is not transparent. This is not. You need to do better. You need to educate your community. You were elected to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, your comments are premature. I haven't come before, Council.
No, and you're on the planning board, right? So is Mayor Ward. Okay, that's why my comments were directed to you two.
And I take offense to you saying that Galloway, they didn't want it in Galloway, but they came here. And Galloway, it was for other reasons, because I talked to councilpeople there.
Yeah, they lawyered up.
And there was other reasons that they didn't have it there. Not that they...
We're going to lawyer up, Mayor. Don't worry about it. That's the reason.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I'm just really surprised that we're back at the same road again with this transfer statement. And I know maybe no one realized, but two weeks ago, I lived in Pleasantville, and we had to call the gas company because we thought we had a gas leak on our street. So we had like three, four gas people out there. They were, you know, going reading the meters, looking for the stuff. And what they came back was saying that it was a breeze coming from the dump on Delala Road. It was coming over, and that's what everybody was smelling our neighbors. Because everybody was outside. It was so bad, it was inside the house.
Coming from Delala Road.
Yes, right. So, you know, if we could smell that, and I know, and I asked what was the problem? Why were we smelling? And he said the trash was so high up in the air that it was blowing towards that part of it. And we just wanted to make sure it wasn't. So if you have a trash facility on Washington Avenue, how much trash are we going to be smelling every day, which is in the middle of our town? And, you know, sir, you two gentlemen, every time the people were up here, and I'm going to say, you were laughing at what they were saying because you think you're going to get over on us. This city here is strong.
That's who you want to do business with, by the way.
We're strong.
You've just got to make your comments.
Well, I just said it because he just got there laughing, and I thought it was disrespectful. That's all I wanted to say. Well, we're not in a place of political, we can take advantage of it.
We see you.
Our leaders don't see you, but we do.
Renees Brown.
We refuse to let Pleasantville be assessed pool.
Thanks, Tony, permission to move.
For money, too.
Thank you.
I want to deviate from this for just a second. The last time that we were at a meeting, well, that I was at a meeting, we had some numbers for the abatement properties and how much they're paid, will have paid today. And we were told that those numbers were incorrect. Has anybody had a chance to find out what the correct numbers are?
There was a debate, but there was a pilot, right? It was a pilot, the symmetric?
Yeah, they weren't pilots, and we do have the correct numbers. I was waiting to hear from you, and they're available anytime I can get them to you. And we did give them to, I think, Mr. Archie. He requested them as well, so we ordered them.
Okay, I never saw them. I didn't bring it up with the other people.
That's okay. If you stop in or call me or email, however you would like, I can get you the numbers.
About the trash business, right? I'm against it. My granddaughter has asthma. My neighbor down the street is on oxygen, she can't breathe. So every time we go down Delala Avenue, you smell that gas. And at first, I thought it was the new gas meters that they put in because they burp and you can smell gas. I also came home and thought I had a gas leak and I had to call the gas company out. And that's how I found out what they were coming from, where the gas was coming from. And I'm just wondering. And then sometimes when you go on a main street, you can smell it's overpowering inside your car. And I was wondering why that is. Like, it wasn't that way with the other gas. What did they do, put the cheapest, most inferior stuff in Pleasantville? I'm asking myself as I'm driving, like, are they trying to kill us? It smells like your neighbor next door, your neighbor three doors down, and one floor door is down, all getting propane gas at the same time. If you ever smelled that before? It smells like that. So maybe you should truly give more consideration to, about this transfer, this trash transfer, and how close it is to where people live and who's going to oversee them, make sure that they're doing it properly. And is that going to bring rodents? Like, are we going to be breathing animal feces and stuff because this is what they want to burn? I don't know. Nobody really has nothing to say, but I'm hoping that you're thinking about it now that you know about it.
That you're thinking about us.
And remember, don't forget who you're representing. You're not representing them, you're representing us. And we don't want it. And those are the reasons, those are very valid reasons not to want it.
I want to ask the lady, I just got one question for her. I just want to know if I could speak to her after the meeting about something?
I'm willing to listen to you first.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Solomon Ademari, I've lived here for over thirty years in Pleasantville. I do have quite a bit of properties in the city. I own quite a bit. Before I go into my case, I would like to ask you if there is any kind of recognition to Mr. Council Herman that has served the city for so long, since I've been here? Is there any way that we need, eighty-seven years old, do something for him while he's alive? If we recognize him while he's dead, I don't think that is going to serve him anything. Just going back to my case. I got properties from the city. Recently, I just bought 172, 186 North Lane Street eyesore building. I put my money. I don't get no money from the banks. I wanted to help beautify the city. In doing that, I get hassled by court enforcement, construction department. I brought this to Linda's attention several times, which I have not, hasn't been addressed. Last year, I got five tickets. Was found not guilty. Five tickets. Took us a year and a half to go back on force. My time and the city employee time. Is there somebody oversighting? Why are they issuing this? There has no validity to it. I'm here to help the city, trying to improve the city. Properties that, you know, dilapidated, bring them up to the court and put in my money. So I'm trying to do a business in the city. It has to be a win-win situation, not I got you type thing. So from what I can see is, again, this year, I got five tickets. This morning, I had a court date. So the prosecutor had to say, okay, we'll give you another month to look into it. So to me, if I'm buying properties that is really, can't go down that debt. It's already at the zero level. I'm bringing it up, putting my own money. No bank or no city is helping me, yeah? But why is the city, the court enforcement, and the construction department are giving me a hard time? All I'm asking is, I just want a win-win situation. I'm not saying if there is anything that needs to be taken care of, give me time to take care of it, okay? Not hassle me. See, I'm trying to do business in the city. I've been doing it, and I wanted to do it because I'm part of Pleasantville. So I would ask, I'll bring you to the council because I went to Linda and I went to the city clerk about my complaints. It didn't go nowhere. I wanted to see the mayor. I've been blocked from seeing the mayor. I've been blocked from scheduling a meeting to see the mayor by Linda's secretary. Is this how we're going to operate in the city? If this would have been a white person, it would have been catering from left to right. Why isn't that a black man, an immigrant, just want to do a little bit better and beautify the city and not get help?
I don't kind of like, I don't really actually agree. We have an awful lot of immigrants in this city. It's a multicultural city that we live in, and we don't have a history of people coming to the mic with your type of issue. You have your issue, and I understand it. And what we can, what we will do is we'll sit down. To Mayor, I'll sit down with you two as well.
I definitely appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Don't leave.
Chair, if I could just comment, and I am willing to sit down so that you could fully understand and report that to Council, the issues, the term used "not addressed" is incorrect.
What is that term?
I'm sorry to say that he just did not get the response that he expected. Every single issue and every single time that you've come into the business, into the building to see me, and I was available, I took the time to work with you. And I'd only worked with you, called court enforcement to speak with the construction official to see what your issues were.
When did we have a meeting? Have I sat in your office?
Yes, you have, sir.
When?
I don't have the date, but you have. You certainly have.
No.
And many a times, first of all. And your comment to me when you came into my office the first time.
It was, Linda, to the door, you don't know.
I'm not going to argue with you. You spoke, and now I'm speaking to the council. As I was stating to you, Council Chair, I am willing to meet with you and Mr. Solomon about the issues, but I want council and the public to be aware that this man has been in my office and the construction office on many occasions, many occasions. And it's just not getting the response that he expects from the city.
What is it? Can you be specific?
We have to talk to the construction official and work through that. I can't break the laws for you.
I just said, counsel, is that the hassle that I get, I'm telling you, five tickets last year was found by the judge not guilty.
Solomon, you just said to me prior to this that you didn't get a chance to sit, and nobody responded to you. You didn't get a... We'll talk after this.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sophia.
Hello. Hi. I've been sitting with you all evening, and I don't know any of you. My name is Sophia. I'm a student at Stockton. I'm going to be turning because I want to talk to you guys, too, because it's like through the whole room, it should be circle. So I want to start by echoing everyone's comments first. I'm not from here. I grew up in Pitts Grove, our way, if anyone knows where that is. And I go to Stockton now. I'm studying sustainability. But I want to echo everyone's anger. There is a lot of frustration in here for a lot of different reasons. I think it's good that we're having some type of public forum where we can exercise these griefs because otherwise they would fester, wouldn't they? It would boil over inside. So I think it's good that we're having this. I also want to echo the complaint about the meeting being virtual next week. I understand why they're saying that. A lot of older adults have technical difficulties a lot, so I think it would be good if that was moved in person to accommodate what the public wants. So as I said, I'm a student at Stockton, and I study sustainability. So for three years now, I have gone to class. I've gone to class.
Council president. Council president.
Sorry, I just... It's okay. I've gone to class, and I've learned about overburdened communities, also called environmental justice communities, that are victims of things like environmental racism. And what is happening right here in Pleasantville kind of mirrors everything I've learned. It is a textbook case, literally from my textbooks. So I want to briefly tell you about a simulation that I did last year in a class. So my classmates and I got together. We were assigned roles, different community members, different stakeholders, that were going to discuss a burden that was proposed in their town, right? This burden was an asphalt plant. It would emit greenhouse gases, increase traffic and noise pollution. This should sound familiar because that's what might happen with this incinerator and associated plants that are going to affect it. But we had these jobs, and we had to attach ourselves to our roles as these stakeholders and say, I'm the mayor. I have to balance growth and ethics. I'm a health expert. I have to prioritize public health. We know you have jobs to do. We know the developer has a mission. That's fine, but I think it's highly imbalanced. When we did this simulation, the result reflected real life. The public ended up seceding or agreeing to the burden being placed in their community. And what happened was the community became more overburdened. They were exposed to more toxins in the air. They had difficulty traveling in an already very difficult place to travel in by foot because of increased traffic. I just don't want to see that happen here. I'm like some white kid from an hour away. And if that happened here, it's like heartbreaking. So, yeah. I think based on other complaints tonight, too, there would be a lot more fruitful investment if you maybe didn't go with that incinerator. That's really just a middleman for two other landfills anyway, so why is it needed? No one's asked that. Why is it necessary? I think you should maybe spend more effort trying to reduce waste so people don't need plants like that. And, yeah, you should really listen to these people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening. Penae Jason Howell. I represent Pines Preservation Alliance. We have many members in the town. Just wanted to say, you really have a great town here, great representative democracy. It's really amazing to see the participation of the public and the council, of course. So I just want to tell you a story about Evston, Illinois. So Evston is a small city in Illinois outside of Chicago. They have a transfer dump in town. It was grandfathered in. Today, the limit that transfer dumps can be from any residential property is a thousand feet. Now, the reason they did that is because they did a study in Evston. And what they found was there were pollutants that were emitted from the transfer dump that was stationed, grandfathered in, in the town. Things like formaldehyde, nitric oxide, methylenic captain. This is nasty stuff. You don't want to live near something like that. So I would suggest, I would offer that, you know, you can look to Evston for a guide, for what you're looking at happening in your town. And today, because of that grandfathering, the town can't get rid of it. It's been approved, it's done. So you won't have any more control after you set this into motion. So that's, I just wanted to communicate that tonight. This has happened before, and it didn't go well for that town. And now people are stuck with something that they have to live, they have to breathe. And there's a reason that asthma is higher in communities like Camden, like Evston, and hopefully not here. But there's a reason for that. Then in places like Hamilton, where there is no transfer dump.
I just have a question, Mr. President. This is for Madam Solicitor. So there's a need...
So there's a meeting on Zoom, I guess, what, the twelve-fourteenth or the fourteenth? So from what I'm hearing tonight, that there, there are proposed changes that, you know, that's gonna be made. Uh, will that, after their meeting, will that come back to us for a, a vote or?
At, at this particular juncture, I, I haven't seen any documents, because I am conflicted. All solicitors, municipal attorneys are conflicted from being planning board attorneys as well. So that's, they keep that separate for a reason. So whatever is going to be presented to the planning board has not been shared with this body yet unless you just have insight as a resident, or you sit on the planning board as part of your duties as an ex officia. So they can vote it, something up, they can, they can approve a plan. I don't know if it's a variance, if it's a site plan, that's not something that I would be privileged to. Nor something that I would know in advance. It, it, I could not even advise this body until which time it reaches you, and it may never reach you. And that's why it's probably important for this energy, you know, as someone who could take my hat off and be an advocate outside of this role, I understand the collective voice. But it's probably just as important that they make that appeal directly to the planning board, who has the jurisdiction, and not this body tonight.
Thank you. Okay, now we have, uh, comments, now we have comments from Mayor and Council. Mayor Ward.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out. I'd like to say congratulations to all our, um, everyone that was promoted tonight in our part, in our, uh, police department, and our new hire. And to all the residents, I hear your concerns. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Thomas.
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, I just hope and pray that you all bring your concerns to the planning board. Um, get the word out there.
It has to be an in-person meeting now, excuse me.
Well, I don't, I mean, we don't have any control over that, but...
The mayor?
So just get the word out, and have whomever join the meeting, and, you know, we'll go to Mayor.
Councilwoman.
Um, I'm sure everybody in this room knows exactly where I stand on this project. I made it known when I was on the planning board, I've made it known up here where I stand. You have to understand one thing about the planning board. The planning board works within the confines of what is dictated by the master plan zoning and regulations. It's not because you like something or don't like something, but they can say yea or nay to it. It is a very finite, I see people disagreeing. Believe me, I know what it's like, we've been sued over other things. And there are confines that the planning board has to work in. I don't know what the solution is to this, but you best believe every single one of you, I will find something and we will do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman.
I wanna say congratulations to all the officers that got promoted, the officers that came aboard. And I wanna say thank you to the public, thank you for coming out, thank you for letting us know what you feel. God bless you all, take care.
Councilwoman Burleigh.
I want to say thank you to the residents of Pleasantville for sharing up during meetings. Um, the issues that my court fought, attract my attention to a very high level. And, uh, I'm in the process of speaking with stakeholders to get better idea. Because I represent a body on this council that is bigger than me and bigger than everybody else that I know around here. So I have to be obligated to do what is right and what will look good for me when I try to let this position. So I just want to ask everyone, share with me any information that you think can help me. Because I'm gonna make my final judgment on information that I receive, and I alone will be responsible for decisions that I make. Thank you all very much for sharing up tonight, and may God bless you.
Councilman Correa.
Thank you all for raising your concerns, there was a lot of good information today. I appreciate the information shared, uh, with us tonight. And have a good night, guys.
Ms. Asher, you got any? Well, um, yeah. First of all, we have my congratulations to all our officers that, uh, that were promoted. Uh, Thomas, I don't think a lot of you were in the room, but Thomas Owick, uh, Brandon Socks, uh, John Antoine, Greg Dennis, and a new officer, Holden Reed. So, and, um, our retiring officer, Captain Hartman, Captain Hartman. God bless him in his retirement. Uh, thank you for all your comments and, uh, and your caring concern, because I care about the city of Pleasantville very, very much. And my thought process during the course of that time, when we did do our, our transfer station, mine was, you know, you do, you do construction at your house, right? So you take the construction, you pile it up in the back, right? In this canister, or whatever they drop off, and it gets set there, it's set there weeks, once, whatever it is and everything. But you definitely, definitely can't do that with your trash. You definitely can't do it with your trash, not in two, three weeks. You miss your trash two, three weeks, you're gonna have a problem at your house. You're gonna have a problem with roads you don't have. The trash wasn't combustible. But the construction was, it's supposed to, as I understood it, it's supposed to get off that site, drove in by trucks, get into a holding area, the holding area is wet down, then it was separated, and it was sent out. That's the way I understood it, that's why I voted the way I voted. If I had to vote because of that that was laid in front of me, I would do the same thing again. Now, I understand where you're coming from, and some of your arguments. And hopefully, that's just not your case. Hopefully, it's just not the case. But the decision of the transfer station left City Council actually a long time ago. And it is at the planning boards.
You're the planning board.
So, um, when I'm, when we, when we sit, and, and then the other, the other part of it is, is this right here, on the transfer station. It's like, this is a, you can't take our shield off and say we were in business. We're in business to, 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 to bring renewables in. We're in business to bring business into Pleasantville. We have to be in business to bring business into Pleasantville. And that's, that was, that was one of the things that was on the thought process of bringing in the transfer station. It was those, it was those things that took, those things that took place. So, um, um, like always, we'll attempt to do the very best that we possibly can for what we have to work for. And then, and with that being said, God bless the city of Pleasantville. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion. On the favor. I'll say.